Roll call.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 And I'll take an approval of the agenda, a motion for...
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. All second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to presentations. There are no student, staff, and community recognitions this evening. So we'll be moving on to item B, the voting on the COW Committee of the Whole Process. So we've been doing this for six months, a trial period, on combining our committee meetings. And we put it on our planning that it would come to us again at this time to decide whether or not this is something that we want to continue doing, if we like this process. Dr. Aslan, do you have anything to say before I ask our board members their opinions?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. So I think I'd like to go down the line and just kind of, if everyone gets the opportunity to weigh in on how you feel this has gone as a process, if it's something that you feel comfortable with moving forward, and then any other information you'd like to share. I'd like you to think about if you support the idea of getting rid of committee chairs, seeing that all board members are present at all of our Committee of the Whole Meetings, so weigh in on that as well. Robert, do you want to start?
Well, I think there's pros and cons to the COW process. The pro is that everybody's here. Nobody misses out on a particular committee that they're not a member of. And it's all at one time. We're all here together. That's, um, there's, I could think of some negative, uh, that, but I'm, well, I would be more in favor of keeping it this way because I think that we probably get better participation. And I would say it's been a good run. I think we should just keep it.
Okay, thank you. Nathaniel?
Uh, I'm in favor of continuing with the COW. It's efficient. We get a lot done. It gives everybody time to weigh in. We're all on the same page. We're here, hearing all the same things. Before we did it, sometimes that didn't always happen. It seemed like there was a lot more meetings. And, I mean, I'm all for important meetings, but if we can be more efficient, I'm definitely for efficiency and accomplishing the same goals and agendas. So I am for continuing on with the current mode of doing things.
Okay. I would agree. Being new to the board, I haven't experienced anything real different, but I do appreciate getting to hear everything in one evening. As far as scheduling goes, that's a little more convenient for myself. So I, I agree. I would support keeping it as is.
Um, I'm in, I'm in favor with the rest of them. I'm, I'm happy with the way it goes. We all get the same information. We all have a chance to look at it. We all have a chance to discuss it. As far as all the presentations, you know, the staff isn't giving multiple presentations at multiple different times. And so that's streamline that process. So I'm all in favor of keeping this the way it is.
Thank you. Marsha?
From my short experience here on the board and then also just from having come to board meetings, I've seen positive results from this process. It seems very efficient. It's nice that all board members are present to hear and discuss the items that are presented. It seems like a process worthy of continuing.
I'll go along with the rest of what I've heard so far. I think in addition to that, I've seen more public participation in the committee as a whole. More people are here and have the opportunity to speak. We didn't find the same amount at the, when we had separate committees because people were here for that specific committee that they were concerned about. I also think that live streaming the meetings is very important for people in the community to know what's going on. So when people start asking, "How did you guys come about this?" Or even board members themselves say, "How did the committee come up with this?" It's always nicer to know that we're all involved in that decision. And that when we do come in front of the board for the membership, the board, regular board meeting to make the approval, we know that everybody's had input. So they don't actually look at the committee members themselves and say, "How did you come up with that?" Because people within the board didn't know how the committee was coming up with it. So I think it's nothing but positive has come from this. And I think it's an efficient use of our time. I've never seen anything go more than a couple hours, maybe two and a half at the latest, where before we had, if you had three meetings in a row, you were there for a minimum of three hours guaranteed. So I think it's efficient for us as board members because we're not having to commit, we've committed an awful lot of our lives to start with, but we need to be efficient when we are here.
Um, from staff and administrative perspective, well, Dr. Aslan and other administrators, do you think that the process has gone well? What's your perspective on it?
It's, I'm seeing thumbs up and heads shaking yes in the crowd from the administrative team members that are on hand. I, and, and I would concur with that. I, I think that if you think back to when we started this trial period, we talked about the process a little bit, and that was that it allowed all board members to hear the same information at the same time because it is live stream and it also gives better access to members of the community who may not be able to be on hand for the meeting. It also allows a couple weeks of time board members feel that they need additional information, need to do some research on a given topic, or need to get some input from constituents. So, so I would say that this has been a trial period that's been a successful, a successful effort.
All right. It sounds like we've got consensus then to move this for a final vote at our regular board meeting at the end of June. Okay. We'll be moving on then to item C, Board of Education Meeting Dates and Times for 2019, 2020.
Can I jump in here?
Yep.
So I just want to check in with Caitlin that we have, in fact, reviewed these dates to make sure that they're not going to conflict with other key district or community events. And, and there have been, we follow the first and third Monday format except for months where either of those dates would fall at a time where there's a conflict, correct?
Or if a conflict arises that does not exist today, we reserve the right to change, correct?
That's correct.
And I, you know, the few that we had conflicts with this last year, it looks that like we're missing those when I checked dates. And just a tentative, the one thing that I, we talked about briefly last meeting was changing our Committee of the Whole Meeting Time to six o'clock. Is there general consensus for that? So that we have a six o'clock set time for all of our board meetings?
One thing to think about is like staff members who are coming to present at the COW and their timing. If they're here at school and staying till five, that might be better than six. I don't know if that's something that we want to think about in that, making that decision.
Yeah.
Also, since COW meetings tend to be longer than the regular meeting, maybe starting earlier rather than going later is okay. I get the idea of consistency. That is the other, the other hand.
The other hand of it, yes, the other side. What are thoughts? Yeah, are there any thoughts?
The only other thing I see is in January and February, the regular board meeting, for some, those are two holidays. I know that's not holidays for everybody, but for some of us, those are holidays. And if we don't change them, that's fine. But just make a note.
I'm in, uh, I think that the six o'clock is the best way to do it because we need consistency, flexing back and forth. And we need to make sure that, first of all, board members need to be able to get here. And if you're working a job and you work till five o'clock at night, it's very difficult for you to leave, you have to leave work every time that you have to come to a meeting because you're having to ask for permission to get out of work. And I don't think that as a board member, if, if we have work conflicts, I don't think you would find, I don't want to prevent people from running from the board because they can't make it to the meetings. Meetings should be convenient for the board members. I'm not saying I don't agree with what was said earlier about the staff members, but we all are being flexible, make sure that we're doing what's best for our district.
I, Aaron, I kind of concur with the thoughts of Ms. Shear that most, unless there's objections by the community, of course, and there haven't been, we've been doing it at five. Nobody's objected. If the community objects, I think we need to listen. But I like the, the idea since it's mostly staff contributions and what their work product is being presented to us, to ask them to stay longer just to wait for a meeting doesn't make any sense as long as the community is okay with that. I mean, we've been doing fine at five. I haven't heard any personal board objections until tonight. So I would, I would go along with five unless there's a outcry for something else. But I like those suggestions.
I see both sides of it. Honestly, it's difficult for me to get here at five o'clock because of work and childcare and figuring all that out. But I completely understand it can put a strain on our staff, having to stay later and fill that gap of time. So finding a middle ground, and maybe the middle ground is five o'clock for the first meeting, six o'clock for the second meeting. If there is, are there any other strong feelings either way? Go ahead. Bye. It's better.
Do we have enough to have a consensus to put it? Do we have to have a consensus to change a meeting time, or can we just have a consensus to do it and we don't need to vote on a meeting time at a board meeting? I believe that, doesn't the president have the ability to set the time of a meeting by yourself?
They, they do. Your, your past practice in this district has been to take a vote on meeting dates and start times.
Well, let's see if we have consensus to move it at, had to speak, we'll say the six o'clock time. If we don't have consensus to move it to the six o'clock time, then it will be consensus to move it at five o'clock. So, Robert?
I vote to keep it the same, five o'clock.
Nathaniel?
I prefer that we keep it as is.
I agree. Five o'clock.
Five.
Five o'clock.
Well, I was going to say six, but I'll say five.
We'll move it to the, so we tentatively, I think we have consensus that we approve these dates and times for five o'clock for the Committee of the Whole Meetings and six o'clock for our regular board meetings. All right. And we'll be moving on then to item D. And Mrs. Hamilton is going to come up to present on this. Review District Nurse Suggested Edits to the Narcan Policy.
What came before you are some suggested edits to the current medication administration policy. The suggested edits would allow us to obtain and then administer if needed a medication that reverses an opioid overdose. There was a slideshow that was sent to the board for you to review on the increase in opioid overdoses over the past five years and the risks that poses. So this is an opportunity to stock a medication to improve student safety, student and visitor safety if someone should overdose while they're at school, which certainly hopefully doesn't happen. But this would add to that medication policy, the wording that says we can obtain this medication, we can teach staff to administer it. And then, of course, we would document the administration of the medication. This is similar to what we already do for EpiPens. We have EpiPens or epinephrine in stock in case we would need it, in case of an allergic reaction. We also stock albuterol as an emergency medication. So these are stock medications that we have in case of an emergency situation. School districts are starting to do this, and it looks like the common practice is to edit that medication administration policy to add an opioid overdose reversal medication. In this case, the medication we'd be stocking is naloxone, brand name is Narcan. I don't know how familiar any of you are with that. But it essentially binds to the same receptors that opioids do. So when someone overdoses on an opioid, the medication binds to receptors in the body that eventually slow breathing and can cause death if you're not breathing. So this medication binds to those same receptors, so it reverses the effect of the opioid overdose. If for some reason someone had misinterpreted why someone was potentially unconscious or not breathing, it's not going to hurt them to have the medication administered. So there's not a danger. Wisconsin state law allows this medication to be administered at schools. The wording is really similar to EpiPens that we can train staff to administer the medication. And it's that hold harmless, that as long as someone isn't negligent, they're not going to get in trouble for administering the medication. Training would be similar. At the beginning of each school year, we do EpiPen and albuterol training for all staff. And then there's a DPI-approved quiz that they take. And then I keep track of everyone who's finished all of that so we know who can administer the medication. And it would be the same as EpiPen and albuterol training if someone was really uncomfortable administering the medication and they didn't want to get trained, then I don't want them trained to administer the medication because that's not safe for anyone. Are there questions? Did you get a chance to review the wording and the information?
I reviewed it and I've seen the breakdown of the costs.
Mm-hmm.
What is the shelf life and what do you expect the cost for the year, for the nine-month breach building?
The shelf life is about two years. That can vary depending on when you get it from the pharmacy, how long it's, what it's actually, what the expiration date actually is. It's available over the counter from pharmacies. So I called Schmitz's. It was $45 a year for the injectable, and I have to look at my notes quick to make sure I give you the right.
It says 155.
And then the nasal form, which does not involve a needle, is 155 for the two doses. So it's got about a two-year shelf life. So we're looking at about $155 a year. If we were to stock for the elementary school and the middle school, the high school can get free medication through, there's a program that can stock our medication for free at the high school level, kind of like we get free EpiPens. So for high schools and colleges, you can get the medication for free. And we can pick. If we're concerned about the $155 cost for the nasal form, we can look at doing the cheaper cost for the injectable form. Pros and cons, the benefit of the nasal form, when I have to teach people how to administer a medication using a needle, they're usually not as comfortable with that. So injectable or the nasal form is a little bit easier to teach and people are more comfortable with that. And less risk of accidentally having someone get poked with a needle, who shouldn't be.
I mean, do you see it need, all EMTs carry Narcan?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're going to be calling 911 regardless. They're in town. Why add, why add another thing in training and time and expense when we have, when we have local access to emergency services who do that?
Yep. And our ambulance service usually responds in seven minutes or less. They're really quick and they do a great job of getting there. So that's, that's something to consider. Do we need to stock it, or is someone going to be here quick enough? If someone's overdosed and they're not breathing, there's really no amount of time you want to wait to administer the medication if possible. So even if we look at the lower cost, the $45 option, that's pretty cheap to save someone's life. So that would be, that would be the pros and cons. More, more thoughts on that or questions?
Is this best practice in, in line with what other schools are doing?
Yes. And I listed in the information I gave you, there's a bunch of different organizations that support this practice of making naloxone available, American Academy of Pediatrics, American College of Physicians, American Academy of Family Physicians, and so on. The National Association of School Nurses, which I am a part of and kind of helps us to figure out how to handle policy changes, also supports having this available. U.S. Surgeon General says this is a medication we should have available. That's why it's available over the counter. If you had a family member, or if you thought you might need to administer it to someone who you're close to, you can go to the drugstore and you can buy it. It's a safety thing.
So more people have this than not, I mean, schools?
Um, I guess I don't have the number for you of the number of schools that actually have it stocked. I could find that information if you wanted.
I'm just generally asking questions right now.
When I was building the wording for the policy, I did some research with the Wisconsin Association of School Nurses, and it split. Some schools have brought it on board and some schools haven't yet. The opioid epidemic is something that we're seeing rise. And so some people haven't bought into it yet, I would say. But I think in the long run, it's going to be something we're, we're going to want to stock to keep people safe.
Thank you.
A couple of quick questions here. One would be just confirming, as a registered nurse, you would be the authorized person to be the trainer in the district? So we wouldn't have to bring a separate trainer in?
No.
And would you see us having some of each form of the drug on hand in order to meet the maybe reluctance, as you'd indicated earlier, that some people may have, but difficult to administer a nasal form if someone is not breathing? So would we have some of each on hand, the nasal form and the injectable form?
The nasal form will still get absorbed even if someone's not breathing. So, and my recommendation would be the nasal form. I'm not sure if the cost is ultimately decided by the board or me because I believe it comes out of that health office budget, which I'm responsible for not going over on as much as possible. So I would, I would, I would suggest the nasal if cost was a concern, we could do the injectable.
So it's more asking for approval for the policy change. Is that correct?
Correct.
From the board?
Sorry, I probably didn't.
No, you're, it's good for us to know the cost of it is now.
And I have one other question. How, what extent, how extensive is the training? Is it?
It's pretty quick. I mean, it's going to be like a 20-minute training. I think this one will take a little bit longer than the EpiPen and albuterol trainings do. There's, I feel like there's a little bit more education involved. If you're administering this medication, it's important to teach people to be safe when administering because when you reverse someone's high, sometimes they can be unpleasant when they come around. And so you want to make sure that you're teaching staff how to be safe and making safe choices. If they're a small person, one-on-one with a larger person, you may not administer the medication right away.
And if it is administered, is there a way without using names? Is there going to be, is that made known? Would that be made known if we have to use something like this within our schools?
We would keep a medication administration log so that we would know of anyone who'd had it administered, yes. Because if you're administering a medication, you have to document that. And then if it's a student who's getting the medication, it would be documented in their health record.
So the board would be notified if Narcan was, had to be administered?
That could be, I would put that in the wording of the policy. Yeah, we could add that. It's, the way it's worded right now is, um, the district, administration of an opioid antagonist will be documented on a log and in the health record if it is administered to a student. It doesn't say that the log, like the medication administration log, would be made available to the board, but we could do that. As far as names and who it was administered to, I can't, I don't think that would be appropriate at all.
No, that's, that's protected.
Yeah. So.
But I think, I'm just, with, with Narcan, there, there are two sides of this. There's pros and cons of Narcan. One is we can save lives, but if they don't get help, we're saving lives in the short term, potentially. And I want to save lives. But I think it's important that if we're administering Narcan within the school system, that the board should be notified by it.
And part of the whole training is that you're also referring someone for help so that there's a follow-through if the medication's administered, so that you're not just administering a medication and sending them on their way.
Right.
And for sure, when I, I do a board report each year, and that would note any administration of an emergency medication. I usually give you health office numbers and all that information in there. That could go in there too.
What I see is every, every medication that you are administering currently is something that has been pre-arranged with that student through their parents and doctor and something that you would know about. You're not just approaching a student that you know nothing about and administering an EpiPen, for instance.
We do have a standing order to administer an EpiPen for a student who's experiencing symptoms of an allergic reaction, even if they don't have a known diagnosis. But listed in that standing order and in the policy art, you should be seeing these symptoms before you administer. Here's the process. You're not just using an EpiPen on someone, you're calling 911. You're contacting the parents, you're contacting the school nurse. So it's walking that line between, I don't have your parents' permission to give this to you, or we want to make sure that you're alive.
Right. So, so that was the question. What is our liability in the staff of a late person who has just your basic 20-minute training?
Yep. Wisconsin state law, you can administer this to someone who appears to be having an overdose. And it's the same for EpiPen. So Wisconsin state law allows us to administer this if needed. And then also on top of that, I work with Dr. Eichton, and he's in favor of this. And we get a standing order for this, for the school to administer this medication if needed.
Who would that person be?
Dr. Eichton, Jeff Eichton. He's our medical director. Mm-hmm. And I, I guess for those standing orders, we have to update those yearly. So I have a whole pile of those that we update for various medications. Yep.
I think it's really unfortunate and sad that in our society, we're at this place where we have to stock this sort of, or even contemplating that fact. And at first, my reaction was at the high school, it makes more sense to me, middle and elementary. But then I was reading through your presentation and information and parents, visitors. It, it's unfortunately something that our society and our community is facing sadly as a whole. And so I think that it's good that we're pro, you're being proactive about being able to help individuals that might be in this situation and need it to save their lives. So do we have consensus to move this forward to our, or first, are there any other questions or comments?
No questions, but thank you. This was very thorough, and I agree. I'm much more in favor of being preventative versus reactive to situations. And like you said, the opioid, opioid addiction and issue is not going anywhere. It's on the rise. And again, much rather be preventative in nature. So, thank you.
Do we have general consensus?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be moving on to item E, SES 2019, 20, Yearbook Contract. Mr. Hopkey?
Hi, good evening. In, in your packet, you have a memo requesting approval of the 2019, 2020 Photography Contract. That's with Lifetouch. I know we've been using Lifetouch for a few different years here. Been a great company to work with, very responsive, great customer service. The added piece in there too is, is they're willing to put in free signage for some of our PBIS projects so we can post stuff around the building. Been very flexible as far as taking pictures and setup times, take-down times. So just been a great company to work with. So I guess I'm asking for that approval for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? All right. Do we have general consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to hear that. We spent some time talking about yearbook contracts and pictures, and that was a process that was done well and seems to have worked nicely. So that's good to hear. We're moving on to item F, Review of These Job Descriptions. Bookkeeper, Executive Assistant, School Secretary, Computer Technician, Food Service Manager, and Food Service Job Descriptions.
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Did anyone have any questions or comments on these job descriptions? Okay. So we've known that we're biting off a couple at a time, so we'll be looking for more of these as we continue. more of these as we continue through this process. All right. Do we have general consensus to move these forward?
Yes.
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 All right. Item G, school improvement plan presentations. And Mr. Hopke is going to start us off.
Absolutely. All right.
Aaron said I should punish anybody who goes over. It's okay?
Sounds good. All right, good evening, everyone. Pete Hopke, Spooner Elementary School Principal. We'll get started here, taking a look at an update for our building improvement goals. Okay. So for the first goal we had was addressing academic achievement for our students. And what we started off with was taking a look at our ELA or reading goal. We wanted no less than 60% of our students that were at that 49% and below to perform, to have an actual student growth percentile of 55% or more. And what we saw is we had a great increase from 37 to 50. Yes, we didn't achieve the goal that we were set, which was, I thought, pretty high. Sorry, 50, get that up there. But take a look at it. Considering we had brand-new ELA curriculum and alignment, I thought we did a pretty decent job as far as moving the bar forward and seeing positive growth for those students on our lower end. So I, I just, just want to attest to that, the, the effort that, that teachers put into the instruction there and really trying to bolster this student performance here. The next goal we, we needed to address was major behavioral incidents. Taking a look at last year, what we had was 474 major behavior incidents. What we did see, and this is something to attest to, we had an increase to 587, and a lot of that is just dealing with the fact that we're accurately recording data on all students at this point in time. I think there was some question as far as what was being recorded, making sure that we're all using the same language when we're recording behaviors. So yes, I, we saw an increase in those major behaviors, which is not just the, the physical piece, but also that major disruption. But some interesting data to share with that, when we took a look at last year's data versus this year's, our overall data from our incidents, behavioral incidents this year actually decreased from last year. And what we had was, this year, we had 50% of our students that had no behaviors recorded whatsoever versus 41% last year. So more of our students are, are following expectations, are meeting those norms. We had, just have a constant, concentrated number of students that have a higher incidence of behaviors. So, all right. The next goal was dealing with the student perception, stabilizing district operations and infrastructure. And the question we had was put out to staff, I have adequate opportunities to participate in decisions that affect me. And what we wanted to see is, we wanted to see an increase in that, in that goal. What we had at baseline was 65% of our staff had agree or strongly agreed. Good or bad, I guess, we, we maintained. We didn't move that bar forward. I know we've had a number of different issues that, that have come up in front of staff and been able to voice their opinions on stuff. So we, we didn't move the bar forward, but then we didn't go back either, so. And then the last item for our goal was increasing that communication. So from September till now, we wanted to have, we wanted to have at least 10 positive and proactive communications. What we did with staff is we had 13 positive communications. And one that I wanted to highlight, talking to a teacher who had over 1,300 remind messages back and forth to families. So there's a lot of communication that's going on. So, any questions?
Mr. Hopke, as you have assessed your goals for the current school year, in what fashion do you see you and your staff casting those goals forward as we enter the cycle for 19-20 school year?
Yeah, that's a good question. I know when we start looking at the ELA and the reading goals, a big thing that we're really taking a look at is the addition of additional interventions and training staff on those interventions. We're increasing our instruction in, in the area of writing, which is a significant, a significant component into increasing reading scores. Right now, we don't have a defined writing curriculum, so we're adding that component in, and we're putting that across. So I anticipate seeing more growth in that reading portion in the future. Getting into behaviors, we're revamping our tier one or PBIS structure, so we're going to be looking at behaviors differently. We're going to be addressing behaviors differently. We're going to be setting up character traits per month that we're going to focus on. So just being a little more intentional as far as our instruction and what we're focusing on with our behaviors. As far as our student, or correction, our staff involvement, is continuing to keep them involved in the process, making sure we're building consensus on, on things that we're doing in the building, and continuing to afford them that, that voice. And then the last one, just continue that communication all the way through.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hopke? Thank you, Mr. Hopke.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Michelle Cobbey, Middle School Principal. All right. So our first goal was that by June, no less than 80% of students scoring at the 24th percentile or below in reading and/or math will have a student growth percentile of at least 55 or higher based on their current level of performance. So I'm just going to skip right ahead to the graph here. So simply put, we want the orange bar to get smaller and the purple bar to get bigger. So if you take a look, when we wrote this, when we wrote this goal, we knew we were shooting for the stars here. Although we didn't meet 100% of our goal, we made some really, really nice growth. In the spring, which is represented on the right hand of the bar, or on right side of the graph, we had 50% of students that had a student growth percentile of 55% or greater. That's an increase of 28% from the fall. Next steps in continuing this growth will be for teachers to develop common formative and summative assessments based on the research of grade-level standards, and for teachers to become more familiar with their unpacked power standards. That's that guaranteed viable curriculum that you guys approved, that. All right. In math, we had the same goal, but just targeted for math. And again, we want the orange bar to decrease and the purple bar to increase. So again, we knew we set a lofty goal, and we were able to make some good progress. In the spring, as represented on the right side of the graph, we had 41% of students have a student growth percentile of 55% or higher, and that's an increase of 18% from the fall. So the next steps to continue this growth in math will be to unpack our power standards, be trained in and implement our new math resource, and work on those formative and summative assessments. And I just want to say that the, the progress that we've made in reading and math is really a strong testament to the work of our teachers and to our math and reading specialists. So I just want to put a shout-out to them, because they really did some good work this year. All right, our next goal, we were working at the middle school on, on operating as a team. So our baseline is from last year at this time, where 33% of the staff agreed or strongly agreed that our school department operates as a team. So we increased that to 54% this year. So that's a 21% increase. Our goal was a 5% increase. The strategies that we used are there. The only modification I would make is that the May survey and the spring survey ended up being at the same time, so we just did the one instead of two. To continue this, we're really going to lean into the PLC process, the professional learning communities, and help that continue to strengthen how we operate as a team. The last one was how we expand our communication avenues. So our goal was to communicate with families at least once every two weeks using the Remind app, send one positive postcard home per semester to each student, so two per year, and post on social media no less than three times per week. So from September through May, the staff has communicated more than once every two weeks using the Remind app. We're on track to send two positive postcards to every student in the school, and we have posted on social media an average of eight times per week. So going forward with this goal, we'd like to continue this. And then I'm, I'm kind of toying with a, a new idea for myself, which would be to have a principal advisory committee made up of students and maybe a couple parents that might kind of help guide some of the work that I do. And that is everything. Are there any questions?
Well, it looks like you've made some good progress.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Next up is Mr. Scherz.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobbey.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm High School Principal Dennis Scherz. We've met a few times. And what I want to do is share with some of the things that we have done this year. I think we've had a very good year. When I came to Spooner, one of my goals was to work on the culture of our, of our building and some of the things we were doing, because I really truly believe that if you change the culture, you'll have academic improvement. Through that process, we were able to discover some other things that we want to work on as we, as we progress. But just going through that, the first thing, if you look at our, our SMART goal, our SMART goal is fairly simple. One of the things that we want to do is make sure freshman students transition from the middle school to the high school. It's a, that freshman year is, is a year that, that students choose whether or not they're going to graduate from high school. So one of the things we wanted to do is, is increase that experience that they have and make it a positive experience. So we put a lot of emphasis on, on giving students support so that they pass classes. And as you can see from our data, well, actually, overall, K, or 912, we had a reduction in Fs of failing courses of 54%, which, again, is something that we wanted to make sure that they understand value and importance of their education. So if you look at that process, the, the same number was true of, of freshmen and sophomores. Our goal was to, to reduce it by 10%. We actually reduced it by over 50%. So again, that, that's a, a baseline now for us, and that's something we're going to continue to improve. The, one of the areas that we're going to continue to address is our freshman transition program. In fact, I had an opportunity to talk to our National Honor Society officers today about, about creating more mentorship with our, our students that are successful academically to pair up with those students that aren't, especially when they come in to the high school as freshmen and sophomores. So that's just one of the things that we want to add to this process. The other things I mentioned, I mentioned the freshman orientation program. We've already talked about some more training to, to strengthen that program. The other thing that I, that I wanted to mention about that as well is we also focused on tardies, which, interestingly enough, we got mid, midway through the year, and I was a little frustrated of not seeing a, a huge change in, in, in those tardies. So we stepped back, made some adjustments, and actually reduced our, our tardies in the last quarter by 65% by making some little more proactive conversations, we'll say, with students. And it's benefited, and we've seen that reduction. Our second SMART goal here has to do with some of the questions, once again, that, that I pulled from the staff perception surveys. We, I actually took five of those questions that I thought were most significant, change in the culture of the high school, and we focused on, on those areas. And the summation of that process, the first one was, you know, under the category of stabilizing district operations and infrastructure, keeping people focused and wanting to stay in Spooner. Am I proud of my school district? Our original survey, 81%, this is from last year, 2017-18, 81% said they were. Our goal was to bring it to 85%. Our last survey in May was 97%, which, once again, I think is a pretty good statistic for us. Involved in staff gatherings, and, and again, in a, in a school setting, it's really important that people get along and want to spend time, because they do spend a lot of time together. So that was another one of our goals. 2017-18, 77% of our staff agreed that they enjoyed gatherings. Our goal was to bring it to 80%, and the results were 88%. And, and again, this is 40 staff members that were surveyed. The third one, it would take a lot for me to leave the district. Last year at this time, 63% said that it wouldn't take a lot, that they would, once again, be willing to leave the district. Our goal was to pop that up to 70%. The results were 91%. Want to remain here at Spooner. Last one, under stabilization, I would recommend this district to others. 2017-18, that was 75%. Once again, our goal was 80%. The results were 97%. I'm also seeing this in people applying for our school district. For example, a social studies position that I have open right now, we're currently up to 25 candidates, which is, I think, good news for the Spooner area. Going down to expanding communication, the school, the school department information and communication, the departments communicate effectively. 2017-18, 53% said that that communication was effective. Our goal was to bring that up to 60%. The results were 91% feel that they're being communicated with. The last one was the principal, the building administration communicates effectively. Last year, it was 38%. Our goal was 50%. The results were 97%. And again, this was reflected also. We just got the results back in our school perception survey, which you guys will see at some point if you haven't already. And again, those numbers jive in the same, same arena. So just looking at some of the other things that, that are important in that process, as, as we move into, actually, this year, we spent, we actually went through two, two books, two professional development books related to PLCs, and, and the whole idea of how do we, how do we remediate students and provide enrichment for those that are being successful. So we went through a, a book called Pyramid Response to Intervention as a staff, and again, the discussion that was generated from that was exciting. Again, we have a staff that's moving forward and, and feeling good about what they do, and, and we're going to start to see those results, not only culturally, but academically as well. So our goals for next year, let me pop this, this is, I wanted to throw this chart in here, give you a little idea of disciplinary issues and where we are with that right now. As you can see, our minor behavior incidents decreased from last year, 663 total, to 322 this year. So we have basically a 50% decrease in, in referrals. In, in majors, 48 majors last year, we reduced them to 32 this year. Again, a lot of that is, is on our staff. The, the things that I've asked them to do to supervise, engage, build relationships, has really paid off. It's paid off faster than, than I anticipated. And, and again, that's a credit to the staff and their ability to understand the importance of what we're doing. So again, looking at some of the professional development things we're doing related to their engaging with students has really had a, a huge effect on our building. In fact, April and May, one of the things I want you to look at as a chart, if you look at our chart in October, you can see that for, for three years, it spiked, including this year. That was our highest rate of referrals. One of the things that I want to compliment you on is passing the, the calendar that you did. One of the things that I want to compliment you on is passing the calendar that you did, because there are, you could look year after year after year and see these spikes, when they are and when students need time away from, well, everybody needs time away from the building. So, just before Thanksgiving, we get the spike, we come back from Thanksgiving, we got a nice lull. April and May, we had a total of 22 referrals. You know, after kids have had a break and we moved along, it's a significant difference in the building when that happens. And again, it's not just the breaks, but it's also that work that the staff has done. And 22 referrals in two months, pretty good. Last thing I was going to mention here is what we plan on doing next year. Very simple. We're going to continue, and we use jargon all the time, and that's one of the reasons why, as a staff, we went through, together, Pyramid Response to Intervention, because it's important that we speak the same language and our terminology. And I'm throwing a term at you, Tier One. Tier One support is classroom instruction. And our goal next year is to improve classroom instruction. How are we going to do that? We're going to work on unit building and learning targets, which, in layman's terms, are objectives. And each teacher understands the importance of developing those units and letting kids understand what they need to learn in any course that's being offered. So, that will be our focus next year in the instruction component. The couple of other things that we'll be doing, power standards were mentioned. That's really looking at our standards and deciding what of those standards do we need to focus on. So, we'll be doing that as a staff. And then, once again, developing learning targets and doing, incorporating into our instruction, pre-testing and post-testing. How do I know if I'm an effective teacher if I'm not measuring it somehow? And again, by pre-testing students prior to their learning, we can find out what they learned in the process. So, that's another focus we'll have for next year. Student behavior-wise, we're going to keep doing what you. You know, one of the things that I introduced, pretty difficult concepts called respect. And that has been our measuring stick of what we do at the high school. And again, that will be a big part of what we do. Students responded very well to that process, along with staff. The only thing we're going to add to that is, and you'll see it around our building, is treat others like you want to be treated. That'll be our next step in that process. And again, by looking at the academic component and strengthening our connection to behavior, I hope to be standing here with even better news next year. So, I appreciate your support. That's what I have. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Scherz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be moving on to item H, 2019, 2020. No, actually, we're going to table that item.
Table.
Yep. So, we're going to table the WIAA membership. Moving on to I, Consider Employee Handbook Update Recommendations.
So, the board was provided with the memo, and then also the document that outlined the changes. It was pretty extensive. There was a lot of information in there. Do you guys want to go through these one by one, or do you just want me to answer some questions that you might have? Clarifications on word verbiage or anything like that? Erin?
Can everyone have a chance to read through them? I think we can just go on to questions and clarifications if anyone has any questions. The whole setup was really well done, in my opinion. You had exactly handbook language and our, and then reasons for, I mean, everything was very well laid out, so I think.
That was Caitlin, so we'll have to thank Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin. Well done. And this process, it was, can you explain the process a little bit to the board?
Yeah, so this is the second year that we've, second or third year we've done this process, where we've convened a committee of classified staff and certified staff, along with a couple of administrators and community, or board members, who have sat in there. And we take any outstanding items that we had from the previous year that are carried over, and then we just, we go through any new concerns that staff might have. And this year, we implemented a kind of a stopgap process. Before you even brought it to the committee, there were three things that we wanted you to consider, and Dr. Haslam, do you remember what they were off the top of your head? I am sorry. Anyway, I wouldn't remember.
Yep. So, we wanted to have some factors that we used as screening. One was how many people would be affected by a change that would come forward as a recommendation. Another one of the factors was cost involved, because, you know, the reality is that as we have worked to be fiscally responsible and produce a balanced budget, we have to be able to afford it. And the last piece is sustainability. We want to be bringing forward recommendations that we're confident that we can execute in our buildings and that they are sustainable in nature.
Thank you.
That seems like a really good place to start, before they even get to discussion. So, I, do we have general consensus, then, to move these forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We'll put them on the regular board meeting. Thank you for all the work and everybody involved in that process. When the process is done well, and everybody that needs to be involved is involved, it makes this much more smooth, smoothly done as a process. So, thank you for that work. All right. Moving on to item J, the ESSA Title I update.
Is that I or J? That's I.
That's, well, because we tabled H. Do we need, so it remains J?
In keeping in the spirit of a brief, we will keep this brief. This is an annual update on the Every Student Succeeds Act. And, you know, just within the past couple of months, I've talked about S in the context of the federal report card. This is just an overview of this program. So, again, Every Student Succeeds Act goes by the abbreviation of ESSA. Background on it, Every Student Succeeds Act is a reauthorization dating back to the mid 60s, and it was the replacement for No Child Left Behind. So, a long lineage of this. What ESSA does is it gives more control regarding how schools account for student achievement. And we look at student achievement in four key areas of category where historically students from these groups have struggled. Students in poverty, students who are not white, students who receive special education services, and students who have limited English proficiency. Next steps is as we continue to execute our work in fully implementing ESSA, as we look to help all students prepare for a successful future. During this past month, each of the schools has conducted their annual meetings, where parents have had the opportunity to come in, learn more about ESSA and Title I, and provide input to that programming. We are going to continue to build on our multi-level system of support framework in all three buildings. And in that, we'll continue, as you heard tonight, to align work with the district's strategic plans, strategic priorities, and with Title I goals that have been established as part of building Title I plans. Continuing to work towards making sure that we have the alignment of professional development opportunities that are connected to Title I goals, and refine the process of supports for homeless students to add responsiveness. This gets to be a demographic that unfortunately is growing in our community and across our country, so we need to be responsive to the needs of those families that are experiencing homelessness. Questions to me? Thank you.
Thank you. I just did want to just clarify that our title goals are separate from the building plans that we just talked about.
That's correct.
Okay. Does this, so this is just our presentation?
Just, this would be something that you would receive and place on file that we did have this annual update.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on, then, to item K, to consider the Delta Dental renewal.
Pretty straightforward. As the memo stated, we received our renewal notice for next year, and there is no increase, which that doesn't happen a lot, so.
Awesome.
Just looking for consensus to move it forward.
Do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
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 Okay, that will be moved to the regular board meeting. Moving on to L, Consider Admin CPI.
This is the last piece of increases for the district. We've gone through certified, we've gone through classified, and now we are at the admin. So, as the memo states, it's looking at providing that 2.44% increase to the administrators for a total of $14,225 for 1920, and this amount has been placed into the budget for next year.
Thank you. Do we have general consensus to move that forward? Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to M, the AGR update. Mr. Hopkey.
All right, good evening again. So, what I've got in front of you is a presentation. I know it's titled Academic Growth Report, but what this truly is, it's the Achievement Gap Reduction Program, which is through DPI, and it actually replaced the Sage program as of last year. And what it's truly trying to do is show how we're growing as a building, using one of the three methods, whether it's one-to-one tutoring, whether it's instructional coaches, which is the model that we've chosen to use, or a class reduction model. So, without further ado, get into some of the data. What we're taking a look at is both reading and math for all grade levels, K through 4, because that's where it's targeted for Sage, or the former Sage program. So, a few things that we need to kind of highlight and go over and just give you a lay of the land, so to speak. I caught word of this from DPI in February, so we're kind of catching up on some of these areas. Although the reading goals for grades 2 through 4 is very much what we saw with the improvement plan, but this is adding into the mix, the complexity of each grade level, as well as the math as well. So, the first one, taking a look at our kindergarten, what we wanted to see is, we wanted to have 35% of our students be at that high risk or some risk for early reading English composition. And what we actually saw was an increase, a significant increase. There's a couple of things that came into play with this, though. This is the first year that we've actually used this testing, this testing method of FastBridge. So, our staff wasn't familiar with what it's testing, what it's looking at, and just getting some familiarity with it. I know that one thing that was really stressed with it was just the fluency piece, and we'll see that with first grade as well. It's really stressing on how fluent students are with their letters, their letter sounds, and just really being able to name that. It did identify that onset, that onset word sounds and letter sounds that increased. We were seeing average letter sounds, that fluency, at 30.3 letters, sounds per minute, but still, it's not getting what, getting at the level that it was seeking as far as showing that growth. Other components to take a look at, our kindergarten group, they really were focusing on rhyming words, and they saw an outstanding growth in rhyming words, according to the test, but that's something that's not calculated into this early composite score. So, our kindergarten teachers are doing great things, but there's, there needs to be a shift in focus, and we've already talked about the things that we need to focus on for next year to address this. Okay? The next one is dealing with math. All right. Once again, what we're trying to do is trying to get 35% of our students at that high risk or some risk category. We started off with 49% back in October. In June, we were at 51%. What we saw was just a number of components. One thing is, again, coming back to that number fact, fluency. Are they able to be fluent in their numbers and how things go? So, that's one thing that we really have to focus on, again, is that fluency component. Things that are really going well, we saw some really good gains in the category of decomposing. So, basically, breaking down numbers and doing some of those early subtraction skills. So, I mean, we're seeing some growth in that aspect as well. Next, taking a look at first grade and that early reading, or that early English composite. In the fall, our objective was to get to 40, because 40% of our students at that high risk or some risk category. As we started at 50% back in October, once again, saw a slight increase, and that's being attributed mainly with that fluency piece, which 47% of our students were at that proficiency, according to the FastBridge. So, we've got some work to do when it comes to that fluency piece as well. First grade with math, this is the first time that these students start taking the STAR test with math. And what we're seeing is, at the beginning of the school year, we had 60% of our students that were at that 15, or that 49% and below. So, more than half of our students were below the national norm. Or that's, that was our objective, is to get them at that growth, sorry. 47% of our students were below that. And what we saw of those 47, is we had 47% of our students show a growth of 55% or greater, which means that they're growing at greater than an average rate, which is good growth. All right? And mind you, I know we were trying to get to that 60, which was very much similar to our school improvement plan, but still, 47% of those lower students are doing well. So, it's good growth. Next, moving on to second grade, taking a look at some of the data here. When we started off in the fall, what we had was we had 37, oh, sorry about that, 32% of our students at that 49th percentile and below. What we saw at the end, in June here, is we had 75% of those 32% actually showing above-average growth, which is just, I mean, they're rocking it. It was great data there. Okay? As for math, once again, doing great things with these students. What we started off with in October is we had 40, 40% of our students in the second grade were at that 49th percentile below. And by June, 59% of them had above-average growth. So, once again, second grade is doing a great job with growing our students and having great performance. Moving on to third grade. Our objective here was to have 60% of our students with the 40, with a growth of 50% or greater. When we started off in the fall, we had 61, 61% of our students that were in that 49% and below, so that they were below that national norm. Of them, 37% of them showed a growth of 55 or better. Not bad, not bad. We're still showing some decent growth. With our math, this is some interesting details. 70% of our students in that grade level are below national norm, so a lot of ground to catch up with. These students, of them, only 9% showed above-average growth. So, we've got some work to do. I know this goes back to some of the discussion we had earlier about the reading piece, as far as implementing different and new interventions. Math was a big focus. We're looking at bringing in two different interventions to help us grow, as well as a new curriculum, which is, I think, well-needed. So, I think adding a number of these things in will, in the long run, show better growth for our students. And the next one is fourth grade, taking a look at their ELA data or their reading. What we had, once again, our objective was 60% showing that above-average growth. We started off with 42% of our students in, below the national norm, and then 49% of those students actually showed above-average growth, which is pretty decent. Almost half of them were above-average growth. And then, taking a look at our math. And then, taking a look at our math, once again, 42% of those students had below national norm, and then 49% of those showed above-average growth. So, once again, we've got a number of things to do. Wanted to be very transparent as far as our data is concerned. There are some high points, and we've got some areas of need, so we'll keep working on that. Any questions at this point?
Well, you mentioned the FastBridge test, and that that's new this year to the district.
It is.
We previously used, was that where Fontis and Pennell was, or it was at STAR?
We had a couple of different things. STAR isn't nationally normed until second grade for reading, and then math at first grade. Some of the pieces that we used was Fontis-Pennell, and then way back when, we used PALS as far as our early screener. So this is, it's a new item that I think is going to show a lot more growth. And the nice thing, too, is that next year, I'm looking at bringing that in for our 4K to do our early screening for literacy, so we can start billing that data sooner, and we can have a little more heads up, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I clarify just?
Yeah, absolutely.
So when we see the October, 42% of students are in the 49th percentile and below.
Yes.
And then June, do we know the percentage of students that are still remaining in that 49th percentile? Because it's, from what I think you're saying, it's telling me that 49% of those 42% have a student growth percentile of 55%.
That's correct. So I did that purposely, just saying, this is the amount in the class that's below.
Yeah.
And that is the group that's growing at that rate. So, yeah.
Out of that.
What's that?
So do we have any data that shows whether or not we've, I mean, so have we moved any of those 42%, the 42% of students, have we moved any of them, those students, above the 49th percentile?
Yes, we have. I don't have that specific data for right this instant, but I can certainly produce that for you, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Would it be helpful for the board to see that more in a graph format than a narrative format?
I think, or even, we've seen a lot of longitudinal data in the past, and I know that wouldn't be possible with this FastBridge, but it gives us, especially as we go forward purchasing new curriculum, it gives us a much better idea and understanding of what impact is the investment making, and I know that it'll be long-term, and we'll see it, but if we only see October to June of this year, that's really hard for us to know how that's impacting.
Sure.
Across the board and longevity, you know?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I know with the student growth percentile, that's over just the year or eighteen months, depending on.
And that was your SMART goal, and so I understand why that's, and it's very good information to know. But maybe a bigger picture of, just because it's, and some of your data is really, really good, and some of it is concerning for those reasons, but a new test makes a difference, and it's hard when you don't have something else to compare that to in terms of how have these students grown in other areas.
Check.
Example, rhyming and different pieces of their education that.
Sure.
This is just one window.
Okay. All right. Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkey. This is another on the record, we don't have to move it forward.
Just receive and place on file.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item N, consider language update to the Limited Term Educator Work Agreement.
We're just, the admin team, Mitch and I, and the rest of the admin team are asking for the board to approve the administrators to put into practice the verbiage that we've added in the memo. As of right now, when we hire long-term educators, it's usually because they're not licensed, or it's late in the year. And that's really, the process then becomes in the spring of the following year, if they still don't have licensure, or even if they did obtain licensure, we put that job back out to posting, and they can reapply, and then we go through the process. What we're asking the board to do is allow us to give them the opportunity to have a full-term contract, a regular contract with the school district, if they do obtain that licensure and their performance is up to standard of the district. And then twofold, on the other side of that, looking at if we do have somebody on LTE, and they are supposed to get that licensure, or if we don't feel that their performance is up to standards, that we put them on another LTE contract for another additional year after that initial one.
So in practice, in the past, have we not been able, administration hasn't been able to do this?
Correct.
Always had to repost, reapply.
Practice has been, there has been some instances, I think, but typically, in the last couple of years, practice has been that it's been out to post, and that we have gone through the process of the hiring process again.
Okay.
Just a couple insights for you. One, is we don't have policy that gives us direction on this, so it just has been, you know, it has been past practice, recent practice in the district. And Mr. Scher's success story, recruiting success story, where he's got deep into the double digits of applicants for a position. Unfortunately, that is not the case in a number of positions. I'm wondering if we could maybe call on Mr. Hamm here to share some of his recent experiences.
I'd like to give you a couple of examples, too. First off, special education and related service positions are, there's more demand than there are people that are coming out of the profession. So I think we've experienced some growth and some really good things in the district, because we're getting some really qualified candidates. But some of those qualified candidates are coming with experience, and maybe not licensure in an area that we're looking for. So what we're looking for is a little bit of flexibility, because we're going to have to really be flexible to get quality people. And the other thing, and it may be common knowledge for a lot of people, but the number one indicator of student success in a classroom is the quality of the teacher. You can take away the administration, you can take away the building, you can take away all those other things, and they all factor in, but the number one thing when we look at student achievement is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. So it's really, really important that we hire good people. There are scenarios where we have a person that has been in a district for a period of time, very good references, very good information and feedback we're getting back on the candidate, we might be asking them to pick up an emergency license for a year. In the way that our contracts are right now, in a long-term position like that, we have to have them reapply for their position in the spring. Any teacher that's performing in a district that the district wants to keep is not going to take that risk. So what we would like to do is, you know, basically, it's in the memo, say, can we bring this person onboard with the understanding that this contract continues in year two with satisfactory performance and securing that licensure? Because otherwise, we're going to lose those candidates. The other scenario that comes in is, sometimes we don't have a great candidate pool, or we don't have somebody that's licensed, then we have somebody that we're working with. They're making gains, they're working hard, we're seeing positive signs. Sometimes, from my perspective, I'm still not ready to lock into a candidate and say, this is the best person we can put in front of kids. But sometimes, that's the best candidate that we have at the time, and it's somebody that's showing growth, that's working hard, that could grow into that. So that gives us the ability to work with a person and say, we'd offer you a contract for another year, but then you would need to apply for your position again next year. It protects the district, and if you're honest with the person and upfront with them, and you offer them the contract that way, they have a choice to either say, no, thank you, and not accept the contract, or yes, I would like to do that and continue to work here and grow. So those are really kind of the two things, keeping in mind that, I mean, we've had some really good candidates, and we lost out on one just because salary-wise, we couldn't match salary, and those are some of the things that districts are experiencing. And there's a lot, I mean, we could debate that all night long, the pros and cons of all of that, but the reality of it is, to really get good people here and put them in front of our kids, it's going to take a few changes in order to grab some of those people.
I want us to be real clear procedurally, so administrators, don't hire teachers. You do as a school board. What we do is, we bring recommendations forward to you via the personnel memo. So, you know, that's really, really what we're seeking from you here, that we're able to make some adjustments to the current practice in the district. You know, again, our work really revolves around extending preliminary contract offers, contingent on your action as a board, and also, you know, trying to coach and bring you the best candidates that we can, because in the end, you know, you think of the many things we've talked about tonight, school improvement goals, achievement gap reduction, we need to get the very best people that we can in front of our students, because they deserve that.
Thank you.
I have a question. When I read this, the first line, I'm okay with what you're talking about, meaning that it's a wonderful recruiting tool for you to bring in a member, somebody who's not licensed, bring them LTE, and you say, here's the end goal, we would like you to achieve this, and in order for you to achieve this, we can then extend and offer you full-time employment without an LTE, which is a wonderful recruiting tool to bring somebody in, and gives them the goal to meet what our standard would be, and also gives you, folks, the ability to work with that person and bring them in, and they have some type of knowledge that there's a pretty good chance that they're going to work here. The part in this that I'm going to ask about would be the also part. There's an also included in here, and the also part is, if they don't achieve what the requirement would be, then the admin has the ability to extend them an additional year. And my statement at this point would be, if they don't meet the first part, rather than throwing that also in there, why can't we send it out for recruitment? And we may find a really well-qualified staff member that could take that as a full-time spot. Right now, we don't have to worry about this person that's not qualified. We should just grab that best person we can, like we're talking.
Yep, and that's what we're asking for. We always, in those, and those, in the second scenario there, would be in the situation where we're asking for the flexibility to be able to do the one-year limited contract, and that person would have to apply.
So they would have to apply for the second year?
They would have to reapply in the spring.
We would, okay.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't automatically, I'm sorry, my screen wasn't.
That's the second scenario, because the first one is different. That was the one I explained, where we would have a teacher coming in.
I think what he's getting in this, in the instance that you're talking about, is if you have that development piece, where you've hired that educator on an LTE, and you get to the end of that first initial year, and rather than give them a contract, you're willing to extend another year of an LTE agreement, because you can see that there's some development that needs to be done, rather than having to go back and out and hire, you know, repost and rehire another position. That's what I think he's asking for clarification on.
That's what I'm trying to get at, is that we hired them the first year with this agreement that you would get it, and if you can get this, then we will offer you a full-time spot. But if you didn't do what you were supposed to do, why would we automatically roll them into a second year and say, we'll give you that same goal again, when that would be the time for us to go out?
So we wouldn't seek to do that automatically. We'd seek to have the latitude to do that. If we have somebody who maybe is, you know, has not met the requirements yet, or someone that, you know, as Mr. Hamm's identified, is in development, making progress, but not to the point where with full confidence, we could say extending a regular contract would be the right move at that time.
And because of the shortage, and without a shortage, you wouldn't have that scenario, because you would repost, you'd have a lot of candidates you'd get.
Here's an instance to say, we have a posting up, we have internal candidates that have the potential licensure, they interview for the position, we're not comfortable giving them a contract, because we maybe see that there's some growth that needs to be done. So rather than giving them a contract, we say, we'll retain you on an LTE for a year in that position, and then at the end of that year, if we feel like the growth has been met, then the contract would be extended at that time.
And Shannon, is that clearly communicated with that candidate, what their expectations are, the performance that is being met or not being met, that piece is made clear to?
Absolutely, by their building supervisor or their administrator.
Okay.
Yep. Those conversations are happening throughout the year, correct?
So people that come in on a provisional license have real clear direction that it's on a provisional license only, and it's, DPI licenses are a property right, it's incumbent on them to gain the appropriate licensure, and we use the Educator Effectiveness Program for our evaluation system, so, you know, it's got real clearly delineated goals and feedback within it.
The other thing I think is of note is that we're not allowed by DPI to hire somebody on emergency license unless we've posted and not found a qualified candidate. So there is a box on the form you have to check that says, you've posted, done a search, and couldn't find a licensed candidate.
Okay.
I really appreciate this change and the freedom that it gives administration, especially for, or in addition to this picture, but also those that are hired late in the year, and maybe performed well throughout the year. And it isn't always the best way to treat staff, if you make somebody reapply for a position that they've held and done well at, if that's not the freedom that you had before. Do you know, so if you weren't able to just roll them into a contract, they performed well and did a great job, if you force them to reapply for their job as an employee, that would be kind of insulting. So the freedom that you have to do that, I think, is important for how we treat staff moving forward.
I just have one quick question. I know that this is something that you'll roll forward for the next board meeting. I'm wondering if, at the same time, I can bring to you language like this with candidates, because we don't want to lose some people that are, we're working on trying to secure right now.
Ed, come to you through the personnel memo.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have general consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. I have to sign back into my Chromebook real quick. All right. We are moving on to item O, consider the School Perception Community Survey Proposal.
I'll speak to that. So what you have is a proposal from the School Perception Company, whom we already work with as a district to conduct the annual staff engagement survey. School Perceptions does survey work and data work in a variety of areas, in addition to the staff engagement survey that you've had done in this district for a number of years. They also do work with school districts and communities that are considering school referendum. And so that's what this proposal would be for, that school, we'd look to have the district engage and contract with School Perceptions to do survey design, and then to execute that survey. And as you see, there is some, there are some costs associated with it, and it's kind of, you're not a hard, fast quote that they've provided you, because at this point, you have not received your recommendations from your referendum facilities committee, and it's hard to know exactly what those will be. So in that, School Perceptions would, when we have a little more solid picture of what that committee's going to recommend, and how the board is going to seek to move forward with that, which you'll have at this time next month, School Perceptions then would come in and work with the board and with school administration, and with our CISA-10 partners to develop their survey. What we would look at is them to do an administration of this survey, probably beginning in mid-September, with the intent of having results back in the month of October. And what I have learned, trying to learn more about School Perceptions and the survey process and all that comes with that, is there is, they're the best in the business in the state of Wisconsin, and there's a pretty good-sized body of feedback saying that districts that adhere to School Perception survey results push a referendum forward that typically have a pretty high rate of passing. Conversely, districts that ignore the results of comprehensive community surveys typically push a referendum forward that fail. So, you know, tonight, we're going to provide information, provide this proposal to you. There's also a frequently asked question list, and ask that you move this forward for consideration at your regular meeting here in June.
Are there any questions? If we decide to do this, and for some off-the-wall reason, our referendum committee comes back to us and says that this isn't, if we agree to enter into a contract with them, and for some reason, our referendum process stops, are we held to?
We'd have some, we'd have some cost involved, but I think that, you know, a couple of things. One is, we don't know what those recommendations are going to be, and based on that, it's difficult for us to nail down at what level we need School Perceptions to be engaged in this process. You know, essentially, their cost goes up the more frequently they need to come to Spooner and work with board and administration. So, you know, we, again, we'll receive those recommendations from that facilities, referendum facilities committee soon, and I think that'll. facilities committee soon, and I think that'll, that'll help us better inform this process as we go forward, then we'll have a better sense of what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll be moving on to our discussion and action, School Community Relations section, thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle. Do we have any updates?
We've hit many of the key events that we look at this time of year. I do want to mention one piece that's kind of exciting to look at, and that is that we are beginning planning now for the first publication of our district newsletter. That will go out, and that'll be a back-to-school issue. So, we're beginning to lay the groundwork for that at this time, and that would be something that we would look to have go out in late August.
Great. Okay. We will continue on our personnel. We've already gone over the review of those job descriptions, as well as the considering the employee handbook updates. The same with item C. Let's see. Build budgets, buildings and grounds. We've gone through A, B, C, action-required authorization for CISA-10 to obtain RFPs for architecture.
So, what we're seeking from the board this evening is, Freda, so you've already entered into a contract with CISA-10 for them to provide referendum preparation services. And if you'll recall, your longstanding relationship with CISA-10, they're project managers, construction project managers, that's what they do. We're to the point in the pre-referendum process where it's time to consider solicitation of firms for architecture and engineering work. So, what we ask the board tonight is pull for consensus for CISA-10 to let out a request for proposal for architectural and engineering work on behalf of the district in the pre-referendum process. I want to be real clear that in doing this, you don't make any commitment to anything at this point. This would come back to you for your July regular meeting for a vote.
Do we have consensus to move that forward?
Yes.
Allow CISA-10 to go out for RFPs? Okay.
Yes.
Consensus, thank you. Do you have an update, and the item D, update on referendum facilities committee?
Yes, I do. The referendum facilities committee met on May 30th. The committee reviewed concept sketches and conducted a comprehensive walkthrough of the buildings and grounds at the Spooner Middle School. The committee examined a list of project ideas totaling approximately $7.8 million. Some committee members brought up the possibility of adding a middle school addition to the Spooner High School building as an alternative to a possible remodel of the existing Spooner Middle School building. A rough cost estimate provided by CISA-10 for such an addition of a middle school onto the high school was nineteen to twenty-four million dollars. The next committee meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, June 4th, at the Spooner High School. The committee is scheduled to meet and finalize its recommendations to the school board on June 12th. The current schedule calls for the board to have committee recommendations for consideration next month. Preliminary work on a proposed comprehensive community survey to be conducted by School Perceptions is underway, and we just talked about the School Perceptions proposal.
Thank you for that update. Are there any questions? Okay. Items E and F, we've already covered, so we'll move on to item G.
The financial update for April, I'll just run through it briefly. Beginning balance in the checking account was approximately $4.9 million. We had total receipts for the month, approximately $463,000, bringing the available checking account to 5.4 before expenses. Total expenditures for the month of April were about $1.5 million, therefore bringing down the checking account balance to $3.9 million.
Thank you. Any questions?
Where are we with the projected deficit for the year-end?
Yep, so, we're running, I'm running it weekly now. Everything is coming in pretty much on budget. You know, we have some things that are a little bit over, some things that are a little bit under, but we don't foresee anything. You know, we have twenty-seven days left in the month, so knock on wood, nothing major is going to happen. So, we're still looking at that, approximately $100,000 with the CLC commitment that the board made at the beginning of last year.
Hundred thousand deficit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Item G, approval of vouchers. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the vouchers? Do we have general consensus to move that forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And we've already addressed in discussion and action for policy, the review of the nurse's suggested edits to an ARCAN policy. We've tabled the WIA membership, yes?
Is kind of time-sensitive. Do you want, I think I can address it if you want.
The WIA membership?
Yeah.
August 1st, I called Matt before the meeting, and so the actual template wasn't sent out until today.
Yeah, it's today.
Yeah, so he said he didn't need the signatures until August 1st, so he was fine with tabling it until July.
And B has been covered. So, we're moving on to the review of the meeting, a reflection of the committee of the whole. I think that we've brought it to consensus that this is the way that we want to go. Are there any other comments about...
Can I just say one thing? I just want to thank all of the building admins for the wonderful job you guys have been doing to move forward with our strategic plan. I know it's hard work for all of you, and I really appreciate that, because it really helps us understand what's going on from building to building to building, and with special ed and all those things. So, well done. You know, thank you very much.
I would agree, and all of the data that you presented tonight didn't just wash over us. It's a lot of numbers, but I heard you, I recognize it, and well done to you and your staff and students.
I'd like to just say that the facilities referendum group that is getting together is wonderful. It's great to see people from the community. We're having a lot of discussions, and a lot of things are being bounced out there that I never would have thought about. It's really nice to see some fresh faces coming in and giving us some ideas. It's wonderful. Thank you to everybody out there that's helping.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. That way, adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.